Okay, so this is a review session for the final exam. For both STAT 2401, which is Elementary Statistics 2, as well as for Business 3000, which is Statistical Analysis for Business. So there could be students from both courses in the room. Overall, the content is basically the same for both courses. And I want to start with, and then I'll take questions, start with kind of an overview of the final exam, which I shared with you via announcement as well as via email. So the final exam for STAT 2401 and Business 3000 is not proctored. You can use any handwritten notes that you've taken throughout the course, flow charts, PowerPoints, practice problems, or homework problems that are provided in D2L. You will need to access and use Mini Tab during the final exam to do the statistical analyses. The final exam will open on Monday, December the 4th, and close on Saturday, December the night at 11:59 PM. You are allotted three hours to take the exam. Now, at the three-hour mark, it is not going to necessarily cut you off. I will simply get a notification that you took longer than three hours to take the exam. You do have to do it, however, in three consecutive hours. You cannot start, stop, start, stop on the final exam. You only have one attempt for the final exam. There are no make-ups. It does consist of both multiple choice and fill-in-the-blank notes. It'll be taken within D2L, similar to all of your other quizzes and midterms that you've had throughout the semester. The final exam focuses on the content from Module 3 and Module 4, and I've given you a breakdown of the various topics and the number of questions related to each one. One thing you'll notice is that the focus is primarily on parametric test. You don't see really anything related to non-parametric, such as Kruskal-Wallis or Two Case Test, or Spearman Rank. So the focus is primarily on parametric test. There are 75 questions total, and they are worth two points apiece. So the final itself is worth 150 points. So do you have any general type questions that you want to ask about the final before we get into specifics?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I did provide, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to maybe take even just a brief look at it. But there is within both STAT 2401 and Business 3000, there is a practice final exam, sort of like a review, if you will. It's called the STAT 2401 or Business 3000 Final Exam Review. So that's inside D2L, and it will give you similar questions to what you'll see on the final. It'll give you the layout of the questions that you will see on the final exam. So I will open the floor, or open it up for questions that you may have. Again, Monty, at the moment, you're the only student in the room. So if you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like Caitlin is joining us. Some others may pop in in a minute when they realize it's 2:05. Caitlin, do you have any questions at the moment?
No, ma'am, not at the moment.
Is there a particular test or a particular process that you were having difficulty with that I can try to address for either of you that are in the room?
Let me see, one second. I know there was, um, let me look at the quizzes. I had a pretty hard time on one of the quizzes.
Okay, that'll be fine. Go ahead. While you're looking, I'm gonna see if I can send out a quick reminder to your classmates.
Okay, I think it was Quiz 10. It was the linear and multiple regression.
Okay, okay.
I think I understood a concept. It might have just been like the Mini Tab steps.
All right, let me, um, I'm gonna send a quick message to your classmates to remind them about the study session, and then I will go over and we'll look at those. Okay, so you said the linear regression and correlation, correlation and regression. All right, so that is Quiz 10. Okay, so I'm gonna preview Quiz 10 on my screen, and we'll kind of maybe walk through the question. So Scenario 1 says, "A bank administrator wants to analyze age and savings amount for eight of their customers. The data below gives the age in years and the amount of savings round, rounded to the nearest whole-dollar amount. Can you predict savings by age?" And I'm gonna copy this over to a piece of paper so I can make some notes for you. Okay, so typically, the first two questions, and I can double, we'll double-check this, but the first two questions related to correlation and regression are gonna ask you which variable represents the independent variable and which one represents the dependent variable. And I know from reading the discussion, some students had a little bit of difficulty with that. So a couple of things I would point out to you, a couple of things to think about when you're thinking about the X and the Y. I do not intentionally, by any means, try to trick you. So the standard rule of thumb when you're looking at these problems, so that people in Georgia read it the same way as people in London, England, and read it the same way as people in Sydney, Australia, or wherever they may be, there's kind of a standard in the setup. And the standard setup is, is that your independent variable, which is represented by X, is going to be in the left column or the top row if it's a horizontal table. Okay? But then by default, that means that the dependent variable, which is the Y, is gonna be the right column and the bottom row, or the bottom row. Okay, so using that logic, then, in this scenario, the X would be age and Y would be savings. If I want to kind of confirm that even further in my mind, we can use the little saying that savings depends on age. Usually, you would have a blank, depends on blank. Whatever you have in the first blank of that saying is always the Y or the dependent. And whatever you have second is your independent. And you need to think about if that makes sense. Would the amount of money that you have in savings depend upon your age?
Right.
And I think it would, and so that makes logical sense to me.
Yeah, I think I was honestly just overthinking it.
Okay, so that's the first thing, because honestly, in terms of the correlation portion, it really doesn't matter which one is X and Y. But then, when you begin to create the model of creating that line of best fit, it matters.
Yeah.
Because you get two totally different equations if you flip-flop them. So it's important, really, from the beginning that you identify the X and the Y.
Okay, so we have to, like, say like on the many, on the projects that we do, like have done for this, that's kind of what I was getting confused on, I guess, figuring out the X and the Y.
Mini Project 6 would have been the one on correlation and regression. And yes, you would, in that particular scenario, you would have had to think about what your X and Y would be. Um, if you're doing the superstore sales and shipping, um, one good example there would be profit depends on the sales. So profit would be my Y or the dependent, and sales would be my independent. If you're doing the health insurance for the healthcare management, um, I'm trying to remember some of the characteristics there. It might be that your body mass index depends on your weight. Or it could be that your weight depends on your height. I don't remember right off the top of my head what variables are there. So you would have had to make that decision yourself. And quite honestly, in reality, if you were doing this, you know, on your job, you would have to decide for yourself. In the problems that you see in the course, on the quiz, and the one that you'll see on your final exam, I have it set up in this manner, so that the left column is the X and the right column is the Y. So it's not, I'm not trying to trick you in any sort of way. Okay, so I want to go back over to the questions. So I would mark these. My age is the X and savings is the Y, if I were going through these questions. And then it asks you to create a scatterplot and to look at the scatterplot. So to create the scatterplot in Mini Tab, we do have to enter the data, because you can't do anything in Mini Tab without data. So I would kind of scribble down these numbers, making sure to keep them paired as they're given to me, which I'm gonna do. I'm scribbling numbers as I'm trying to talk. Okay? And then I'm gonna go over and put these in to Mini Tab. You do have to keep them paired in the way that they are given to you. You'll have two columns of data, because you'll put the X into one column and the Ys into the other column. Okay, so I'm going over to Mini Tab. I've got them written down now. One of the things that I like to do when I'm doing this in Mini Tab is I'm gonna indicate that my X is age, which is in years, and that's the X. And I actually label it X in the column name, so that makes it easier for me when I go through and have to select things, because Mini Tab's gonna ask me which one is X and which one is Y. So I go ahead and mark it. Then I have the savings, which is in dollar amount. It's actually whole dollars, and that's the Y. So then I enter the numbers. You know, always kind of double-check that you have entered the correct numbers. Don't have something crazy entered. Okay, so then I'm going back to my other column. Entering my dollar amount. And then I need to create a scatterplot. Okay, so to create the scatterplot, I go to Graph, Scatterplot. We're keeping it simple. Then you have to identify the Y. And sometimes this is where students get messed up, because Mini Tab actually asks for the Y variable first, but it's clearly labeled as the Y. And since I have already marked it as Y in the title or the label name, I know that my Y is the savings and the X is the age. And then I click OK. And it gives me, and I'm gonna copy this over to my paper so we can look at it, this scatterplot. And in looking at that scatterplot, we ask ourselves three questions. First of all, we ask ourselves, does there appear to be a pattern within the dots? You know, do you see some sort of pattern which could imply that there is a relationship? Because ultimately, that's the question we're trying to answer, is is there a relationship between age and the amount of money in savings? So I'm kind of looking at this thing. I could maybe see a pattern in it? So I'm gonna say yes, but again, this is open to your interpretation. It is very subjective, because I'm looking at it with my eyes, but Caitlin could look at it with her eyes and not see a pattern. Or Lily could look at it with her eyes and not see a pattern. It is very subjective. It is open to the interpretation of the researcher. Yes, Lily?
So as long as we see like a little kind of start of line, is that what, uh, because I see it like, you see those three, uh, a little before 30, and then another one, yes, that line you're drawing. So as long as we see a line, right?
It doesn't necessarily have to be a line. There can be any kind of pattern. It could be, you know, it could look more like, you know, kind of one of those exponentials, or it could even look like a parabola. It's just, is, does, do you think it could be? Now, we're specifically in our course looking at linear, because that's the next question. You know, we said there does appear to be an overall pattern, but then we want to specifically say, does it have a linear pattern? And that's when you want to focus more on, could you imagine drawing a line through some or all of those points? And again, I agree with you that probably you could, because you got, looks like about three or four of the points that are almost in a straight line.
Yeah.
But again, even this is very subjective, because again, we're looking at it with our eyes, and different people could see different things.
Okay.
I'll tell you this, though. I mean, for those three, that, these three questions, if you answer them, you're gonna get credit for them. Because again, it's subjective. And again, I'm saying, yes, I see a pattern. Yes, it appears to be linear. But again, Caitlin could look at it and say, no, I don't think there's a pattern, and no, I don't think it's linear. That doesn't mean she's wrong. It's just that she's seeing something else. That's why we don't stop with the graph. We go further. Okay? And the third question in this series asks us then, kind of what is, is that pattern, is that linear pattern positive, negative, or zero? And this really relates more to the slope. Lily, do you have another question?
No.
Okay, your hand was still raised, so I just want to make sure. Um, the linear pattern, and again, that's related to the slope or the tilt. Well, I kind of sketched that rough line in there when Lily was asking her question. And so notice how that line goes up as we move left to right. And if you remember a little bit from your algebra days, when it appears to go up as you move left to right, we say that is a positive slope, or it's positive. If it appears to go down as you move left to right, then that's negative. And then zero would be somewhat of a flat line, or is a flat line. Okay? So again, walking through the questions in D2L, because I know these are the question, excuse me, the questions you're gonna see on the final as well with, excuse me, with a different set of numbers. We decided, yes, there appears to be a pattern. I'm sorry, I've got the hiccups all of a sudden. Um, does there appear to be a pattern? We think there is. We did believe that it appeared to be linear and that it is positive. That's what our eyes are telling us. And again, we could have disagreed. Okay? That doesn't mean that I'm wrong, and that doesn't mean that you're wrong. It's just what our eyes are telling us. So that's why we move on or go to the next step, where we actually calculate the Pearson linear correlation coefficient. Okay, so again, that is something that we do in Mini Tab. So in Mini Tab, to calculate your linear correlation coefficient, using that same set of data, we've already entered the data. I don't have to re-enter it. We go to STAT, Basic Statistics, and then we have to scroll down to Correlation. And we are correlating age and savings. It doesn't matter the order in which you pick those. We just need Mini Tab to know which two we're picking. And I click OK. And it actually gives us the graph again, and gives us the R value underneath. Or if you want to go on down, under the header that says correlations, it gives you that R value. Let me see if I can get down here. Okay, so from that set of commands, we get that our correlation is .413. So based on our Mini Tab calculations, this value here is R. So R is 0.413. And I noticed that in our quiz, it asked me to round to three places, which is what I have for Mini Tab. So I'd have 0.413. Tap that number in. Okay? Then, so now we've got a number. And I want to determine, is that number different enough from zero to say without a doubt, yes, R is statistically significant, which means there is a linear correlation? And so we conduct a modified hypothesis test. The null hypothesis for the correlation test is always row equals zero. But I know, and I don't know if it was any of you, but I know students seem to have trouble with what that means, because it does seem backwards or counterintuitive to what you would think. So the null hypothesis is row equals zero. The null hypothesis for any hypothesis test that you have learned must always and forever contain equal in some form. What this means, though, the interpretation of this means that R is not statistically significant. And there is no linear correlation. The alternative hypothesis, which is always and forever the opposite of the null, would then be row does not equal zero. The opposite of equal is not equal. If row is not equal to zero, that means that R is statistically significant. And there is a linear correlation. Always. The correlation hypothesis test, the null will always be row equals zero. The alternative hypothesis will be row does not equal zero. And then we run our hypothesis test. For the correlation test, we use Anova, which would be an F test statistic. And of course, it's gonna have a P value. We really only focus on the P value. But it's not an Anova command. Okay, it's not an Anova command. You're gonna have Mini Tab do the correlation and regression. So at this point, I'm gonna go STAT, Regression, Regression, Fit Regression Model. And when I finish this particular command, it's going to give me all of the information that I need to work through the rest of the problem. I just have to read different parts of the results. Okay, so it's, again, STAT, Regression, Regression, Fit Regression Model. The response is always the The response is always the Y, which is the savings. The continuous predictor is the X. Response is always the Y. Predictor is always the X. And then I click okay. And again, I get lots of information. And the first thing that I need to look at, notice the blue headers. I have Regression Equation, Coefficient, Model Summary, Analysis of Variance. Analysis of Variance is where I'm going to start. And what I'm looking for is the P value. My P value is zero point three oh nine. I then compare the P value to alpha. So my P value is point three oh nine. They tell us to use zero point zero five for alpha. If I make that comparison, I have a three compared to a zero. Three is greater than zero, so P is greater than alpha. If P is greater than alpha, we fail to reject the null. If I fail to reject the null, that means that the null is true or valid. And in this case, let me scroll back up. That means we fail to reject the null. So the null is true, and the alternative would be false. So because we failed to reject the null, what we have concluded is that R is not statistically significant, and there is no linear correlation. Okay, so I would say my, my decision is to fail to reject the null. My conclusion for the hypothesis test, if you write it in the manner in which we normally write a conclusion, we would say at the point oh five level of significance, R is not statistically significant. And there is no linear correlation. Okay, so let me go back over to the questions again, so we can kinda walk through those. To me, it's easier to work the problem all the way through. So our null has to be equal. The alternative is not equal every time, all the time. My P value was zero point three oh nine?
Yep.
Point three oh nine. We decided that, is there a relationship? We decided, no, there was not. Then, for question eleven, you just told me, we just concluded that R is not statistically significant, and there is not a linear correlation. Notice the preface for question eleven. If there is a correlation between age and savings, determine the linear equation for the relationship. But we just determined there is no linear correlation. There is no relationship. So I don't even do this problem. There is not a linear correlation. We just made that decision. So I cannot determine a model. It is inappropriate to do so. Then it says, if you can make predictions. Well, in this case, the way this is set up, I cannot make a prediction because I don't have a model, because there is no linear correlation. So I have to say, cannot make a prediction. Question thirteen then says, what is the coefficient of determination? Right answer as a percentage with two decimal places. We actually have already found that. That is under that command, Stat, Regression, Regression, Fit Regression Model. The same command we used a minute ago. But this time, we're going to look under the blue header labeled Model Summary. Under the Model Summary, we're going to look and find our R squared. You want R dash S Q. So R squared is seventeen point zero eight percent. Mini Tab gives it to you as a percentage with two decimal places, which is what the question asked for. Okay, so R squared is seventeen point zero eight percent. So I'm going back over to my paper, and I'm gonna type that in, seventeen point zero eight percent. And then it asks you to interpret R squared. Well guys, if you correctly recognized the value for R squared, you can automatically eliminate two of these choices, because two of them do not include the correct value for R squared. The other piece that's important is you have to have the word variation. Okay, which all of these do. It says approximately seventeen point eight percent of the variation in people's savings amount can be determined by the variation in the age. You gotta have the word variation in there. And you always have the Y variable first, and then the X. So this first box here is actually the correct one. Okay, I'm just gonna copy it over to my paper. Okay, this would be the interpretation. It's important when you're looking at that interpretation, that you have the word variation in there, and it's always variation in the Y can be determined by the variation in the X. It is always and forever set up in that format. Caitlin, does that help you?
Yes ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, other questions related to really any of the topics? Um, this one was specifically on correlation and regression. Lily, do you have any?
None, uh, this topic one.
Okay, do you have other questions?
Um, one second, I wrote it down. Can we do a chi-square test?
Okay, there are three different chi-square tests. Do you need to see all three, or do you need to see a specific one? You had goodness of fit, test of homogeneity, and test of independence.
We did, uh, the goodness of fit and the independence, but I know, uh, I'm more confused with the homo.
Homogeneity?
Yeah, that one.
Okay, let me see if I can, let me, um, go out to that lesson and find, find one, okay? Give me just a second. I gotta get out of this quiz. Okay, so I'm going to quiz twelve. Which would have all three of the tests. Um, and one thing that I might talk through here, because one of the comments that, um, I got in some of the discussions was trying to decide which test to use for chi-square. Okay, so I've posted in the module four announcements under a couple, a couple of different times, a document called, Which Tests Should I Use? And it lists all of the parametric tests that we've talked about, and gives you an explanation of when to use them, and also then it gets into non-parametric. So let me scroll back up here to the three chi-square tests. Okay, we use chi-square goodness of fit if we have qualitative data. So your data involves words or categories. And it's usually a single survey question. And you're trying to determine, does your data fit or follow a specific pattern or a specific distribution? Chi, uh, excuse me, chi-square test of independence. And I think test of independence and homogeneity are the two that folks are confusing. Because in both cases, you have two qualitative variables. But it, it's, it's how that data was collected that's important. We use a test of independence if there are two different questions being asked to a single population. With test of homogeneity, you have two populations. Um, and we wanna know if they have the same distribution. So you have one survey question asked to two different groups. Okay, so you have to be careful. A lot of it's going to be in the wording. So let me go back over here. So, for example, if I'm looking at scenario one on quiz twelve, it's talking about a bag of Skittles and the number, number of Skittles you have that are certain flavors. Okay, so they're talking about flavors. It's the only thing they're talking about. Flavors or words. So that's gonna be chi-square goodness of fit. Let me go down to scenario two. Scenario two says, "A researcher reads that the marital status of US adults is distributed as follows. Never married thirty percent, married fifty-six percent, widowed, da-da-da-da." Okay, so then they give you, um, they sample four hundred people, and they give you the results for those four hundred people. The number that were never married, married, widowed, or divorced. Again, you're using categories and words, and you only have basically one survey question. I would have asked a person, what is your marital status? So again, this is chi-square goodness of fit. Okay, let me go over to number three, page three. Uh, category, the same number of students. Okay, this one actually gives you, is explaining the concepts of generics. It actually tells you kinda what the hypothesis is gonna be, that all the categories are the same. And again, you only have one category or one variable of eye color, which is words. Excuse me, so that's chi-square goodness of fit again. Did we even do, did I have one on here? Alright, so let's see. College students may be interested in whether or not their majors have an effect on starting salaries after graduation. Suppose that three hundred recent graduates were surveyed as to their majors in college and their starting salaries after graduation. Okay, so it looks like to me that in this problem, I had three hundred recent graduates, so I had one group of people. And I would have asked them in the survey, what is your major? And then what is your starting salary after graduation? So I have one group, two questions. This is the test of independence. Lily, was this one of the ones you needed to see, or you needed homogeneity?
The last one, you're saying, the homo.
Okay, homogeneity, okay.
Yeah, I think, cause also we talked about it. I remember you talking about it on the, I had other videos. And then on the, our Mini Tab project, well, either we had to choose between the goodness of fit or independence. And there was something at the bottom, I can't remember, that we weren't really gonna use the, that homogeneity one.
Homo, I, I, you could not use homogeneity, test of homogeneity on Mini Project seven, because you do not have two different groups. See, you have, you have a single group that was surveyed, and the data was collected from that single group. To use test of homogeneity, you have to have two different groups. For example, in this scenario five, it says, "Do men and women select different breakfasts?" Okay, so I have a group of men that I'm gonna survey, and I have a group of women that I'm gonna survey. So I've got two different groups that I'm gonna survey. And I'm gonna ask them, what breakfast do they have? And you don't have that condition in your dataset that I provide for the Mini Projects, so you cannot do test of homogeneity. Okay, but I'm gonna walk through this problem. Okay? Is that what you needed, is for me to work through this problem?
Yes.
Okay, so let me go, I'm copying it over here to my paper. Okay, so we have, again, how I recognize this as being the test of homogeneity for chi-square. Okay, I have two populations or groups. In this scenario, we have men and we have women. And we're gonna ask one question. We have one question. What do you eat for breakfast? The other clue that this is chi-square is that we have qualitative data. Okay, we have words, because what they eat is gonna be words, French toast, pancakes, waffles, or omelets. Um, their gender is also qualitative. So chi-square, the three chi-square test deals with qualitative data. It just depends on whether you have one variable, one variable from two populations, or two variables from one population. So because this is two groups, um, with one question, this is the test of homogeneity. Okay? Chi-square. It should be chi-square first, but... If you remember a little bit about English, the prefix homo is, means the same. So we're trying to see, you know, do these two populations of men and women, do they basically have the same breakfast? Or do, you know, do women like something else? Uh, you know, like something different from men or, or whatever? We're trying to see, are they the same? Okay? So the first step in any hypothesis test is to state your hypotheses. Now, again, I'm gonna go back over here to Mini Tab, or not Mini Tab, but to the class, to the thing, because remember- because remember that these questions are going to be multiple choice. And again, the key thing to remember, maybe you don't even, you know, you don't know how to work the problem. But if you can remember that the null hypothesis always and forever has to imply equal, then you can almost pick it out without necessarily knowing which kind of problem you have. Okay, because you have the statement, "The distribution for breakfast preferences is the same for men and women," or is not the same. So if I'm thinking about those two statements, I need to think about which one of them implies that it's equal. Well, saying something is the same is, implies that they're equal. Okay, so I would choose that one. Again, even if I don't know how to work the problem, or which type problem I have, you should be able to pick out the null hypothesis, because it has to be the one that contains the phrasing for equal. So we're saying the distribution of breakfast preferences is the same for men and women. And again, the reason that is the null is because of the phrase "is the same." "Is the same" implies equal. The opposite of equal would be not equal, and so the phrase that means not equal would say is not the same. So my alternative then is the distribution of breakfast preferences is not the same for men and women. And again, even if you don't recognize that this is a Chi square test of homogeneity, you hopefully can still pick out the correct hypothesis, because the null hypothesis always and forever has to imply or mean equal, or contain equal in some form. Okay, then I need to run my test, but I got to put my information into mini tab. Okay, so I need to kind of copy these numbers down out of this table, so give me just a minute. You would have to do this on your test, you would have to write the numbers down. I suggest that you have scratch paper nearby and write it all down, and not have to keep toggling back and forth when you're working in mini tab. Okay, so I'm going over to mini tab now, and I'm going to get a clean worksheet. And this one's a little weird when you enter it, okay? In column one, I'm going to enter my categories, which are men and women. Okay? So that's my gender. Then we have the four different breakfast options. We have French toast, we have pancakes, waffles, and omelets. When I'm done, it should look similar to the table that was given. Okay, you're basically recreating the table in mini tab. Okay, so I have the row of information related to the gender for men and for women, and then each category. So basically, I've recreated this table. Then I'm going to stat tables Chi square test for association. The other thing that could be confusing to you is we use the same command for the test of independence and the test of homogeneity. Okay, it's the same command in mini tab. It's just interpreted differently. So it's the test for association. My rows were the gender. My columns were French toast. Oops, have I done something wrong? Oh, I had, I'm sorry, I had it summarized in the table. So my columns are French toast, bakers, pancakes, waffles, and omelets. My row labels are the gender. Okay, so you make sure you have to use summarized data in a two-way table, because I had put the table in. Choose all of the columns. Indicate what your rows are. And then I'm going to click okay, I think, but I can't see my okay button. Okay. Okay, so I click okay. Mini tab recreates the table and does the totaling for me. I don't really need any of that. What I need is this Chi square test. And I'm going to copy that over to my paper, so I can point out some things to you. Okay, so I look under the Chi square test. We use Pearson. Okay, so we ignore this other one. We use Pearson, and my Chi square test statistic is 4.013, right here. The corresponding P value is 0.260. I'm going to compare my P value to 0.260 from mini tab to alpha. Now, I need to go over back to my problem, because I don't remember what they told me to use for alpha. Use a 5% level of significance. So they're telling me to use alpha of .05. So if I compare these two numbers, that first decimal after, first number after the decimal for the P value is a 2, for alpha is a 0. 2 is greater than 0, so P is greater than alpha. If P is greater than alpha, every time, all the time, we fail to reject the null. If we fail to reject the null, again, that means that the null is true and the alternative is false. In this scenario, that means that the distribution of breakfast preferences is the same for men and women. So we would say, at the .05 level of significance, the distribution of breakfast preferences is the same for men and women. And again, with these hypothesis tests, I, I would recommend that you, you know, read the question, work it through, and then come back. Once you've got your work, come back and answer the questions, instead of having to toggle back and forth. Okay? You would have to type in your test statistic. So my test statistic was 4.0. My P value was 0.260. We failed to reject, and my hypothesis there is breakfast ordered is different. The breakfast ordered is, there's insufficient evidence to conclude that the distribution is different. Does that help? Was it Lilly or Caitlin that asked me that one?
It was me, it did help.
Was there somebody else in here? Did they leave?
No, there's a...
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, alright. Other questions, let me get out of this one. Other concepts you had difficulty with? Okay, so that-
The two proportion test?
The two proportion test? Okay, let me get to that quiz. Okay, let me find one that's two proportion. Scenario one was one, scenario two was one. Okay, so I'm in quiz 11, which is on one and two proportions, and I'm looking at scenario number three. And it reads, "Two types of phone operating system, systems are being tested to determine if there is a difference in the proportion of system failures. Fifteen out of a random sample of 150 phones with the first operation system had system failures within the first eight hours of operation. Nine out of another random sample of 150 with the second operation system had system failures within the first eight hours. The developers believe that the first operating system has a greater proportion of failures using a 5% level of significance, is the developer's beliefs true?" Okay, now here again, I would, you know, go over to my scratch paper and think through and think about this problem and work it through before I start answering any questions in mini tab. Okay? So hopefully, you can recognize without too much difficulty that this is a two proportion test. A couple of things to point out. One, it does, you know, kind of jump out at you that in the first sentence, it does say two types, and then it's using the word proportions. Okay, as opposed to using the word mean or average. Okay, so that's kind of my clue, if I'll, you know, pay attention and look at those words. Those clues should help me realize that I'm doing a two proportion Z test. The second sentence, or the second paragraph gives me information about the first system. Okay, so this would be like number one. And the third paragraph gives me information about the second one. So this is number two. The fourth paragraph is actually going to help me identify my hypothesis, because it says, "The developers believe." So when you're looking for your hypothesis, you look for words like believe, think, conclude, want to know. And they're saying, "The first operating system has greater proportion of failures than the second operating system." Okay, might help you to add that little caveat in there. It also uses the word greater. Okay, so greater, when I think about mathematics, makes me think of the greater than symbol. The greater than symbol does not contain equal. So this statement that I've got kind of squared off here is going to be my alternative hypothesis because of that word greater, which does not imply equal. So the first step, one of the questions I know that's on the exam, because I looked before we started this afternoon, is it asks you, "Which test are you doing?" Okay, so you're going to have, you would identify this as a two proportion Z test. Then you're going to identify the null and the alternative. We just decided that this statement in the scenario is the alternative. And it says, "The proportion for the first operating system has greater or more failures than the second." I literally took the sentence and translated it to symbols. So then I have to think about what my null hypothesis would be. The null hypothesis is always opposite the alternative. The opposite of greater than would be less than or equal. So the proportion one is less than or equal to proportion two. It's a very similar setup to what you had with either the one mean, mean Z test, one mean T test, or the two mean T test, but you're using proportions. And there's no doubt we're using proportions, because they have the information. It says proportions in the scenario. From there, I'm really ready to do my command in mini tab, but it may help you, whoops, sorry, it may help you to organize that information before you go over to enter it into mini tab. Okay, so we could put, it's usually X, which in this case is the number of failures. Of failures. And you have N, which is. Um, the total. Number. Of trials. And we have phone system number one and we have phone system number two. And all I'm going to do is read the sentences up here and kind of fill in the blanks, but it may help you to organize it before you go over to Mini Tab. So it says fifteen. Out of 150 phones for the first one. So fifteen failures out of 150 for the first one. And for the second one, it says nine. Out of 150. So I'm going over to Mini Tab. We're doing a two proportion Z test. So we go to stat. Basic statistics. Two proportions. We have summarized data. They've told us this is what happened. We have summarized data. So the number of events, the number of failures for sample one was fifteen. Out of a total of 150. For sample two, it was nine out of 150. And then I'm going to click, oh, I gotta go to options, sorry, options. Where 95%. Because they told us to use alpha equals 0.05. Our hypothesized difference is always zero. The symbol in my alternative hypothesis was greater, so I changed that to greater. And. I think we do it separately. I click okay. Okay. And it run, Mini Tab runs the test for me. You have to scroll down until you see the header that says test. Okay? And I find that from Mini Tab, I find that my Z. My test statistic. Is 1.28. The corresponding P value. Is 0.100. Those come directly from Mini Tab. I'm then going to compare. My P value. Which is 0.100 to alpha, which is 0.05. Again, if I'm making that comparison. Okay, I have a one compared to a zero. One is greater than zero. Or yeah, one is greater than zero, so P is greater than alpha. When P is greater than alpha, we fail to. Reject. The null. If I fail to reject the null. That means that the null is true and the alternative is false. So we always write our conclusion in terms of the statement that is true. So we would actually say if we take and use this sentence. From the paragraph or from the scenario that gave us our hypothesis, we would have to add a word. We would say at the. 0.05. Level of significance. The first operating system. Does not have. A greater proportion of failures than. The. Second. Operating. System. Because what we proved based on the evidence that we had is that it was, the first one was less than or equal to the second. So it had fewer. Or equal. Number of failures. Now, once I've finished. Working through the problem, then I would go back to the quiz and walk through and answer the questions. The null hypo, let's see, my hypothesis was greater than and then less than or equal to. My P value. Okay, it asks you for the sample P for the first operating system. Okay, let me show you where that is because Mini Tab calculates it. Okay, I didn't show you that, so let me show you. Okay, Mini Tab calculates that for you. Under sample proportions. Under descriptive statistics, when you do that command, stat, basic statistics. Two proportions, under the header descriptive statistics. For sample one, my sample proportion was 0.10000. Sample two was 0.06. So my first one would be 0.1. Z, 0.10, two decimal places as instructed. For the second one. Whoops, the second one was 0.06, so 0.06. Says what is the difference between those two proportions? So then they want you to subtract those. Okay, which is going to be 0.4. 0.04. Then they ask you for the test statistic, which we calculated to be. 1.28. Our P value also happened to be 0.10. And let's see, there is not sufficient evidence to support their belief. So guys, even though it's not worded the same. If you work it through the way that we, you know, that I've demonstrated in the different videos, the different lectures, that kind of stuff. You should be able to, to pick it out of the multiple choice. Lily, are you good?
Yes, ma'am.
What else?
For me, those are the two that I mainly had the most trouble with.
Okay, Monty, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am, I had trouble with those two as well.
Okay. Alright, so here's what's going to happen, guys. The, I'm going to, once the session ends, it takes a little while to process, but I'll post this in the announcements so that you can go back and look at it. But the exam opens at midnight tonight. Um, and you have until Saturday, December the nights to take it. Um, but you need to allot yourself three hours at least. Okay, there's 75 questions. Um, you only have one attempt, it gives you a breakdown of the questions. If you haven't had the opportunity to work through the final exam review. I would do that first because that's going to give you an idea of the layout, the type of questions you're going to see and that sort of thing. Okay? If you have questions. I will still have regular office hours tonight from 8 to 9 PM. I will open a Zoom session on Monday, which is December the 4th at 1 o'clock. Several students wanted to attend a study session at 1 o'clock, but I planned it for today. So I'm going to open up a Zoom session at 1 o'clock tomorrow if you need to come back in and ask questions. You can always use email, I try to respond within 24 hours. Other questions, yes, ma'am?
No, that's good, thank you.
You're very welcome. Alright, you guys have a good afternoon.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.